I just was talking. A minute to go here. I have a.
I think the only thing that's come up.
Inkling, which I had about this meeting was because we were talking about meeting at six o'clock.
Ah, yes, I did have a moment where I walked in there and thought, oh no.
We use a brief meeting.
Yeah.
But that's, that's on the 15th apparently.
Oh, thanks.
Maybe, maybe we need.
And we're gonna come back.
We will, we will meet over at the PDE at five thirty.
Okay.
We'll come back here for the regular council meeting because of the budget meeting.
Okay.
At six thirty, but an hour should get you three.
The buffet line.
Yeah.
I mean, they must be filled.
Light hors d'oeuvres.
It's rated dinner time. What are we doing?
Maybe some donuts.
Boo.
Coffee?
Don't pick coffee, donuts.
At a certain point, you gotta own the messaging.
Yup, embrace it.
I mean, yeah.
Nobody online.
Thanks for being hooked up there.
Yep.
Everybody's ready to get their mics on. Six o'clock, I will officially call this meeting to order among the City Council. And this is our property tax levy meeting. On the agenda is approve the agenda. Is there a motion to that fact?
No motion.
Seconded in the hall. Catch that portion? Move and seconded to approve the agenda of this meeting, all the people that have motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This plan to officially open the public hearing has legislated whatever in the last session, I believe. And I know there's some attachments that Chris has put together. He's also given us handouts, which I asked if you knew, and I appreciate that. Reason for the handouts was at the, at the school hearing. There was a question from the public, even though Ricky Elliott gave a very good explanation about this is a public hearing. We're not debating, we're not voting on it, whatever. But the expectation for the public was that, why are you guys, you know, ignoring me? I mean, why are you not answering the question about what's your taxes going to be? So here's some scenarios based upon, on the city's share of their taxes. And currently, and then with some increases in valuation, so one hundred twenty-five to one hundred fifty thousand. Or staying the same, what's it, rollback new numbers, new tax rate. Assessment, which we don't control. Rollback, which we don't control, tax rate, which we do. So one of three is out.
The city levy rate.
Seventeen cents, I think it is, or eighteen cents is on us. So we are still open. How many are listed?
Ah, it's the.
Is that the city levy rate?
Uh huh. Just the city levy rate.
Yeah.
Seventeen cents. That went up.
Yeah.
Eighteen cents. Oh, I see. From thirteen fifteen to thirteen thirty-three.
Right.
Got it. That's us. Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Chris, for putting this together and getting ahead of it on.
Bit of rhetorical question, but combined, are we spending more than the city is, by having this meeting? Than the city's gonna pull in from this eighteen cent difference?
Yes.
Just making, making sure that there's an understanding of sometimes these laws or the hoops we have to jump through for openness. Maybe I'll.
The metrics respect it.
Yeah, I think, here's, here's what I believe. I really do. I think number one with the property tax system in Iowa doesn't mean changes. And I think every administrator across the state of Iowa would agree with that comment. Where we differ with what is going on currently at the state is how do you make that happen? We would argue that the drastic increase in valuation every two years has kind of been the, the cause of what concerns most citizens. And so, yes, the levy goes up. I think everybody kind of agrees that nobody wants to pay taxes, but if they're going to pay as long as they have the ability to come in and, and see what their tax dollars are going to, that's fine. What they don't understand is when they don't make a single change to their home, and two years later, then they're, they sell their house, you know, for seventy, eighty thousand dollars more than what they bought it for, and all of a sudden, their value goes up by seventy or eighty thousand. I'm like, how does this work? And that's the portion that isn't being addressed right now is, is that drastic increase in valuation. So I, I always think, I think this was, I don't wanna say it was intended to confuse individuals, but if, if you take that middle column of, of the information sheet that was sent out by Lynn County where it says budget year affected property tax twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And they're, they don't even explain it very well, but it's this middle column. That's if, if the city spent the exact same dollars, but had received this year, the levy would have been eleven dollars and forty-five cents. And if I didn't have to give raises, or inflation wasn't seven or eight percent, we didn't have bond, I mean, all of that would be true. But it, it doesn't make any sense to me to show the public that if nothing changed, and just your values increased, this is what your levy rate should have. Because it's unrealistic. So what I gave you today, I know there were some questions, and you're gonna get asked. Fiscal year twenty-four, and then fiscal year twenty-five are side by side. And then the other two fiscal year twenty-fives are if your, your tax increase went from a hundred thousand to a hundred twenty-five or a hundred fifty. Here's what that net effect is going to look like for the city's tax rate. So if there, you have zero change in your house value from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-five, you would actually see a decrease. I haven't talked to a single person where that was the case. And there, like I said, that's kind of the, the issue at hand, right? What scares me a little bit is what's going to happen next year when the rollback is at forty-six percent? Cause this is probably the lowest it will go. Maybe next year we'll stay right around the same, but it is gonna creep back up.
Why do you think that?
Because rollback is affected by that drastic increase in value. And I don't believe, based upon what we're seeing that two years, and so in, in calendar year twenty-five, when they do the reassessment, that you're going to see twenty-two percent increases in value. And that was the statewide average, twenty-two percent. It hovers between eight and twelve percent. So this was, I mean, this was a ridiculous amount.
I just, I guess I'm not as convinced if there's anybody in Iowa or the legislature that is willing to roll some of these numbers.
No, what I'm saying is, is these, these numbers are not going to look quite as complimentary in following years. The rollback starts to go back up the other direction. So.
Same way. Sorry, Lori. And our share, like this year, the seven hundred and eighteen dollars.
Our share to go to game.
Thank you.
The seventeen.
That, that's about forty-two percent of public taxes. School district's like forty, forty-one. It's a little under us.
No, school district is typically higher. From a levy perspective.
Okay.
So I would say generally, generally speaking, if you looked at the overall rate of like thirty-four dollars, school district is always number one, then the, then the city, and then the, then the county, and then all of the other little subcategories. I do like the fact that they've consolidated a lot of the levy rules into general funding. The issue for us is that we didn't use most of them, but there are communities out there that did. And they are strengthening a little bit.
Do you have a statement like this, you have one at home, but. I dropped one. Actually, I made a photocopy of it. The top column. This table shows how current tax, obviously, through this tax. Are you on page one? The backpack of page one, the top set. It's got the schools, forty percent of tax on the right side is forty point two, two percent. And then Lynn County's thirteen, and then the city is forty-two point eight nine. I mean, I knew we were always close to the city, but I think we. Close to the school. To, to, to the school, yeah. But I think.
Well, so.
So that's the column we need.
Only because the school district's district is much bigger than the city limits of Mount Vernon. Yeah.
True.
But if you look at like levies, for instance. I think the school is obviously much higher than the city's at seventeen point four one, I believe. I'd have to verify that, but I think the school.
All school funds seventeen point four one five five?
Yeah. Compared to our thirteen point three three.
Okay, that should be the, what's compared. You know, earlier, Chris, you were referring to the Excel spreadsheet table. And you were talking about if everything remained the same, it would be eleven point four five percent. And since it's not gonna remain the same, and we're gonna go from a hundred forty-six million to a hundred fifty-nine million in the property, proposed property tax, it's gonna be thirteen point three three percent, which is less than two tenths of a percent increase?
It's not percent, it's, those are the dollar amounts. So that would be eleven point four five one five nine per thousand, eleven dollars.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then it's thirteen point three three six zero one dollars per thousand.
So one percent of thirteen dollars is one point three percent, one point three, one cent, one point three, one point three cents, I think. So it's, it's, hold on, one, one, one point three percent? One point three percent, that's it.
It'll be interesting. I, I'd be anxious to see how this affects growth. You know, some of the comments that, that communities are making right now, there isn't a whole lot of incentive to, to grow modestly. You almost have to grow a twenty percent clip to overcome four percent. Some of the issues that have been drawn from a straight standpoint as far as how much growth we're allowed to capture in a year. And I said it before, I think we've already eight point some percent this year as far as growth, which is something that I would take any given year, but because we were over six percent, we had an option now by three percent, so. I think a lot of communities of similar nature to Mount Vernon, it'll be kind of a feast or famine ideal, depending on when some of that value comes in. For others that have seen zero growth. You know, I'm not sure what that looks like.
That hurts small communities. Four times. Still with the public hearing. Anything else we need to do here?
Well, you close public hearing, and I'll wait till six thirty to start the next meeting.
Anybody online with any inquiries?
Not for her.
The adults are going six fifteen, and.
That's too much.
Okay.
Works out just fine. I mean, we have three TV screens. We don't need all of them.
I was so close, I was so close to messaging that to see. If you didn't activate, if you put the log in, I could mess up, right? Like, I don't, let's do this.
I mean, we've canceled meetings for less. I think there's snow coming.
For like storms?
I think there's a snow coming.
There's training this summer.
I think it's time to officially call this regular meeting, the Mount Vernon City Council's order. Any agenda changes? Not a little attempt, motion approved. So move. Seconded. Move and seconded to approve the agenda. All the people that have motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is communication time. If there's anyone from the public here to speak to any item on the agenda that is not already on the agenda. This time you're allowed five minutes to speak. The mic here, I think you were on the calendar, it was on the agenda later, right? Raise your hand like you were gonna get up now.
Yeah, I was gonna do something, you're good.
I don't wanna inhibit public contact.
No, you're good.
Wait for a minute. If you ask for public comment, otherwise we'll move the consent agenda. We have two items. Questions about those from staff? Otherwise, we'll move forward with those. Motion?
Move approval of consent agenda, just for a second.
Thank you, Paul, for a second.
Second.
Thank you. Move and seconded to move forward with the, approve the consent agenda. All the people that have motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to resolutions. G one, second dedication of street runaway easements, dedicated with an owner certificate, dedication of store club and pet edition. Any explanation you wanna add, Chris?
Not like I said, normally this happens after the improvements are putting, been put in, but the city's doing the improvement, so it's a little, little different.
Questions of staff? Otherwise, accept a motion for that resolution.
Move approval of resolution four dash one dash twenty twenty-four A.
Call, second Stephanie. Move and seconded to move forward with resolution four one twenty twenty-four A. This is a, a poll vote, so.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion carries. On the resolution two, accepting work on project owners' Davis Park lighting improvements, art and lighting improvements, they're up and done.
They are. The final contract price was one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-eight cents. Retainage of eight thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents will be released should the issue of pay application here be drawn out.
And your information is J five?
Correct.
On the resolution J two, sometimes a G G two, Davis Park lighting, any questions of staff?
I would move approval of resolution four dash one dash twenty twenty-four D.
Take this guy, second?
Second.
Great on that one. Move and seconded to move forward with the resolution, second resolution here. Marshall, can you call a little there?
Anderson?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Number three, four dash one dash twenty twenty-four C on the community moratorium, et cetera. I think we have speakers to that effect.
Would you, I just wanted to point out that the new resolution was handed out to you after being, that's following our city attorneys.
So this is with the red lines accepted.
Correct. I would have given you the red line, but it was too, a lot, and.
It wasn't a lot.
Just wanted to give you the clean version after she got done with it. And the reason for that is, this is not a practice that is used often. And we wanna make sure that the attorney is comfortable, obviously. Should they have to go to court, too.
We did have a couple of questions, but did we?
What's that?
Now, you think first.
Just push the button on the base, turn green.
Name and organization for the record.
I'm Cassie Rice, program director of the Williams Coalition of Lynn County. We're just here to support what I was gonna, I was just gonna introduce us a little bit earlier, let you know a little bit about us. Can I do that right now? Okay. So again, Cassie Rice. Here with me is Diane Buffalo and Lenny Assis, and they're project coordinators for the coalition. We serve six communities in rural Lynn County. And many of you are probably up here for Mount Vernon because you believe in a safe and healthy community. And we are much along the same mission and mission of that. Safe and healthy communities for those six rural communities that we represent as well. We pride ourselves on collaborating and supporting those communities. We've done some work with tobacco-free, nicotine-free parks, so kids can play in some of those parks where they're smoke-free. We've worked with Cornell College and the schools to, to pass melaxin policies for students that, or students or people that may overdose. We've worked with passing social health ordinances to hold adults accountable for providing alcohol to minors. Additionally, we provide programming and education in schools that teach kids about substances and how to create, how to make healthy choices. And then as of recently, we've been working to provide mental health awareness trainings, so people can identify somebody who might be struggling or in crisis, and then help them understand where to, where to help them get resources. So again, we're here tonight to provide support to further your mission for helping continue to keep Mount Vernon safe and healthy. As far as the moratorium goes, we have scoured all of our resources as far as different coalitions across the nation that have passed moratoriums. We've also looked for different documents and things like that. We compiled as many as we could and picked our favorites, and then helped draft this moratorium after that. As far as language and things that we thought we should include, we did seek some support from our chief and the city, our city administrator. And so that's kind of where we landed with, you know, the CBD, the hemp, psychoactive marijuana, marijuana THC. And part of that is because when we're looking long-term, five years potentially from now, if things have changed nationally, being prepared for those changes as far as growers, sellers, different businesses that can move in. And might change the landscape of maybe what you guys are hoping to accomplish here. So that's kind of the reason why we're here for the moratorium, to kind of further research what we can do to stay ahead of the game as well, as far, and then also, you know, work towards keeping up with what you guys are already trying to do.
We started with a focus on customer, I was first from West, if I remember correctly, about where we were going by downtown and balancing, keeping storefronts filled and what type of businesses we were having as storefronts. Thanks for going through the process to develop this resolution language through our attorney and so on. Any questions of any parties?
I do, I just wanna make sure I have clarity. Cassie, you just sent us some information, and I believe in that it said that there was no age limit for the purchase of vaping. What am I missing? Because here, what we're talking about is legal, you know, to any person under the age of twenty-one for a long list of items. And I feel like it's somewhere in the materials that you sent, you, there was a mention of there not being an age minimum. And maybe I must misunderstood something.
Okay.
So that's why I'm just asking for clarity.
They did raise the limit kind of during COVID to twenty-one.
Okay.
And I do feel like there's a lot of people behind on that new age limit, but I can look through.
So to purchase any vaping equipment or paraphernalia, you mean?
Tobacco, nicotine, yep, all of that is twenty-one now.
Some of that may also come from the state discussion that's going on right now, as well, with some of the food products that are coming out with cannabis and THC in them as well. Because there seems to be a gap in what's regulated, what's permitted on those versus is it under the Department of Ag or under, you know, what, where is it falling at?
So am I taking crazy pills, or like, when I was a kid, could you be eighteen to buy cigarettes? Okay, all right, so I'm not, all right. Thank you.
You're legal.
Well, there was one, like. That was confusing for me, by the way. Thank you very much.
I saw that the attorney came back and was trying to draw a little finer point around the ten percent, and whether that was, how we should gauge that. And I know that when you wrote this, Cassie, it was ten percent of the floor space, is what it says here? Was there any discussion about ten percent of revenues?
I think it was sales, is what I wrote, and then it looks like it was changed to include both, correct?
Yeah, so the challenge, challenging part when it comes to sales is, especially when it comes to tobacco, C stores, and obviously, much larger corporations, and what constitutes ten percent of the sale if it's limited to the individual store. So this moratorium would allow C stores to continue the ten percent.
A C store, meaning that there are.
Convenience stores.
And then that, there might be a hundred convenience stores under the brand, the angle brand?
Yep. So the square footage is an easy way for us to actually go out and physically measure, say, yes, this constitutes less than ten percent of your business versus the two new businesses that I've opened up where I would say the entire square footage of their building is right up of these products. So the goal is, by introducing this moratorium, what they're asking us to do is give the council six months to, you know, come up with COVID sections that would address this specifically, most likely in the zoning code.
Are you comfortable with that six-month timeframe, with us being able to get that done?
No, but you can, the, the moratorium being six months is, is to allow you to, A, make sure that progress is being made, and B, you can extend it. If that six-month timeframe is going to last. It's easier just to let it last than it is to try and repeal it.
Would it just reappear on an agenda in six months, or do we need to call it up again?
No, it'll just reappear.
So if we did nothing six months, assuming we pass this, if we did nothing six months from now, it would just fall off the books and that would be that?
Potentially.
Okay.
If you, if you did not pass an extension, this, this is good for six months, and that's it.
Okay. So we would need to take proactive action to either.
Yeah, you would either get through the, the code of maintenance.
Or the resolution.
Or, or extend with another resolution.
And the ten percent allows, to your point, a quick start where somebody to come in without this being an issue, but it would, at least for the next six months, prohibit somebody who's more than ten percent of their floor space was taken up by vape, tobacco.
Correct. And I did, you know, I will say that I think it's valid, we've had two stores open up in the last.
Sure.
Two months. So.
And this has no impact on existing, only a moratorium on new?
Correct.
Any questions of staff or Cassie, a couple?
I think it's the right direction to go, and because of that, I will need to approve resolution four dash one dash twenty twenty-four C.
Next, Stephanie, for a second.
A second.
Move and seconded to move forward with moratorium for six months, school consumption products. Everybody vote on that? Marshall, is ready?
Engel?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Turner?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That resolution passes. No proaction, it's a whole business. If I remember correctly, there was a question earlier off record, but that's the state table, Department of Rec, if I remember correctly?
Yes, so I actually met the bot today, being in discuss capital projects with some of the language, reevaluation of the sales tax language. I've asked Parker to rec. Normally, they provide me a CIP that has trails, and then Parker's gonna ask them to combine to prioritize all of them. And that will give you a much better picture of potential expenditures. Not only Parker put on trails and then allow you to make decisions whether or not you want to be forward with this particular expense.
Thank you. That's, that's up there. Really appreciate Matt doing that legwork, and you and Lori being open to revisiting this after Tuesday. this after Tuesday. Appreciate that. Moving on to motions for approval, claims lists, last, sent out this afternoon by Marcia. Questions about that?
No, I will move to approve the claims list.
Staff, you have a second. Moving second to approve most recent claims lists presented. All prepare for that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed. Motion carries. J2, discussion consideration and request for a hearing. Chapter 50.08, nuisance abatement procedure. Doug Burner, property located at 521st Street Southeast. Go up and speak Doug, introduce yourself and address and.
Hello.
Doug has a mic. Well, there's nobody online anyway.
Okay, Doug Burner, I have the property at 521st Street Southeast, Mount Vernon. I know it's kind of been a nice work for everyone as I'm a little shaped as well myself. Trying to get it all cleaned up in due time, spend, trying to get someone hired to build the building and then trying to get ahold of people that sit here and not having much help with getting answers on what I can build there and what is practical there. And I'm just trying to get something built there. I wanted to, what I wanted to is flex space, commercial condos, space as a service door, overhead door, window, right four to six units for rental. So the three towns in Sierra Rapids and Iowa City, all around the bigger cities. That's what, all that, most of all material that's laying down is building that to down about a year and a half ago in Solon and I moved two of my property. So that's what, one of the eyesore is down there. And I need a little more time to, I got Joe Nelson hired to have the plan, so he's good kind of with engineers and getting all plans and squared away from that. That's about it.
The scope of this motion, of this discussion is cleaning up the area. I think if you're going to build whatever you want to build there, that's, goes through planning and zoning, if I remember correctly, if you have to do new construction there. But thanks for this being addressed, appreciate that, as you mentioned, and hopefully it'll move quickly and if you've got a contractor, that's a step in the right direction, a very step in the right direction. But any timeframe?
Hopefully should be going, hopefully if I can get answers on what I can build there and what, you know, all the details, they'll move forward right away. So depending on getting more material, I might not be able to reuse the trusses that I took down because the engineer said that I might not be able to sign off on it since they're being, they're being reused. But of course, all the steel would be just fine. A lot of material would be still useful.
Nelson, contractor or Nelson is the architect?
Joe Nelson is the contractor.
Contractor, okay, not the architect.
Right. I think structural engineers. I have to, have to get a site plan first and then engineers have to do the plans. Since it's over 10,000 square feet, supposed to be, the existing building there was like 170 by 72 and I'm looking at putting up 170 by 60. So basically almost the same footprint, just not as deep.
Doug, thanks for coming in. You kind of explained, what's a service condo?
Um, it's a, they're all over like Sierra Rapids, Iowa City. It's a, it's like, it's probably a flex space. It's like a roofing contractor, a small business guy, you know, contractor, any sort of contractor.
So be four units for a private business to come in and rent that space?
Right. It'll be probably three 30 by 60s and then a 25 by 60. And I'll have, by my other shop, I'll have a 40 by 60 and a 20 by 60. And I'll have four, probably eight rooms. And then I have restrooms in each, each one of them. And maybe like that little office, you know, build to see, basically just a huge shop space essentially.
Right, not terribly complex to build?
No, pretty easy, it's full barn, pretty simple. That's why this whole process is being a lot more work than you think it would be.
So once you get, I guess the contractor, you said Joe Nelson's going to help you with that, but once you get what can I build there approval from planning and zoning, all the approvals that you need from start to finish, the best case scenario, the worst case scenario would be what?
I'd say probably four months.
That's the best case scenario, the worst case would be?
Six months. It shouldn't take that long to me because that's pretty simple, you know? The water is already there, the sewer is there, I can tie into it. So my thing is just getting, what, and I was told that it was already zoned for that type of building, but now I'm hearing that maybe it's not or it can't be, going to be so much, they say it was only 70%.
70%, can you even read it? 70% impervious coverage, there's a limitation as to how much impervious coverage that can be. Yes, so unfortunately at this point, facing development, it has to be brought up to code. And so that will require is a removal of some of the concrete.
And which 2000, like 21 hundred square feet would be removed because that back, you know, the north end of the building would be, all that kind would be taken out.
So we just need to work, work through that with Mr. Burner and as long as you can agree to grant an extension on his time, then we can move forward with that.
So what, what sort of, I mean, we just put a six month moratorium, right? I mean, we have an end time on that. What would be inappropriate? Cause I, I mean, I get that it takes time to, you know, trying to get a garage taken care of for two years. So, but another 14 days isn't going to do me any good here, right? I mean, what would we?
No, I think if I were to make a recommendation, then that's what we were looking at doing. The recommendation would be thirty days, thirty days to submit an application. Now, I'm going to take a little bit of issue because it hasn't really been on the city side. Your engineers had some questions about nonconforming uses and things like that. And so we've answered everything that, that has been asked of us, but I, I'm going to be honest with you, depends on whether or not, from what is submitted through P and Z and City Council. So this has a 30 day minimum to get through P and Z and City Council because you review all commercial applications. We haven't seen a building plan yet. We just received questions. So I haven't seen what it actually is going to look like, but the former building, the bowling alley that was there was always grandfathered in. Nothing there is grandfathered in anymore. So everything that gets built at this point on has to meet all firm codes. So I would say it could take a minimum of three months to get through that attack process and depending on how quickly their design professionals submit documents to the city. Keep in mind that everything has to go from a building code standpoint in Lynn County. So if the site plan gets through council and P and Z, then the building plans have to go to Lynn County. Wouldn't, definitely wouldn't be surprised if it were three months down the road before final approvals and you could pull an actual building from there and then however long it takes to put it up.
So three months pre and then four to six months shovels in the ground, that kind of thing. So we're looking at, you know, seven to nine months.
As long as, I mean, from our perspective, as long as there's progress being made, submittals. So I would say within the first 30 days, as long as there are submittals being given to the city for review, then we're saying on, of course. If at any time through this process that more than 30 days lapses between what they're required to submit or do, and it's not because they're waiting on a P and Z meeting or a city council meeting, then I would take issue with, you know, the expedience of the process. But there's.
A lot of hoops to jump through.
Yeah, there's, there's many steps.
Right.
As long as they're continuing to meet those, then I'm fine with the progress.
Yeah, I think us asking for a final date, you know, kind of really kind of.
Some of my friends have left like, you know, surgery campers and stuff there and I can tell them, and we need to get rid of this stuff, you know? I gotta have my space. And I would hope to be able to get like cars along and jet skis out of there, you know? It's like, this looks pretty trashy. And then also I, I believe I, you got a sketch of the building, correct?
Yes, not of the building, just where you wanted to locate it.
Yeah, and like the, the front of the building, what it looks like.
I don't recall receiving that.
Okay, I can do it all to you.
Yeah, if you want to send that over. You can do, you can.
So I hear a lot of timeframes being thrown out. There's, I want to give Doug the appropriate amount of time to do this while still having the trigger, triggering mechanism in place that, and I, I know you understand we need.
Yeah, and I want to get Doug.
We need it.
Want to get Doug to last year in all sense.
And, and the other thing that I, you've addressed to a certain degree, but there are certain things there that have nothing to do with building and, you know, I think that the community would appreciate movement there. I think we're all in agreement that the right thing to do is extend this and work with the property owner to give a good solution. And I, I like your solution. I think those, whatever it is you call that.
Flex space or commercial condos, it's got different names.
Yeah, they, you know, I've, I've seen them. They're, they're attractive from a business perspective. I've seen where, you know, each space is filled with a different business. In some cases, one business takes half of them and then, you know, so the versatility is really valuable and I think it's something that makes sense for Mount Vernon. We really don't have a space like that. So I think the question is, what do we do to move this?
I think you can do two things. The first, within 30 days, campers trailers, anything that doesn't relate to a building. I mean, definitive progress would have to be made on that. Now, if one of your friends is gone and can't get it past that 30 day period, we would just pull the trigger as long as not everybody was leaving. So within the next, within the next 30 days, as long as progress is made on all non-building related materials removal, and then I would just leave it as no more than 30 days lapse between the approval process. So you have 30 days to basically submit and keep continuing down the application process, which again can take up to three months. But as long as there's not more than a 30 day window, then.
With the understanding that if there's something on the city's end that delays that.
Correct.
We, you know, the clock stops for Doug during that.
And, and that's, that's, I think, probably the easiest way to track it.
I think so too.
Yeah, and also I could point out, like between the two buildings, my shop, which is a cold storage space, I keep my camper there. It's, and a lot of my trucks down there is my shop, you know, where I keep my skid loaders and tools, concrete and stuff. And I have done that for 15 years, you know? So there's going to be some stuff that's going to be outside. I mean, it's not like, I can't use that for my shop space anymore. I mean, that's.
That shop space could have remained, is that right? That'll remain.
Yeah, yeah.
Even with the.
I'm going to add more shop space for myself and then have like four, four rentals. And that way, when I get that, you know, smaller bay, my camper will be inside.
And that'll be a conversation point that we have to have. So party where the storage units is listed, I think is limited industrial and moves to general commercial. So limited industrial is the only zoning district we have that allows outdoor storage of any sort of construction materials. Trucks, five, campers, skid loaders, things like that. L1 is fine, C2 not. So there could be a potential that I have to look at possible rezoning. Unfortunately, parking of things outside on a parking lot or using a park, there's no grandfather clause there. It's just the building itself. So we'll have to take a look at that as well. But again, as long as the applications continue to come in and they, like I said, there isn't a 30 day lapse, that isn't necessitated by a review or an engineer or something like that, you know, as long as we're being kept in the loop, we're fine.
I just want to ask a question, Doug. Earlier you kind of indicated that there was a delay on the part of the city. Does the city owe you anything right now?
Well, I just need to know what, because I just, like, emailing those three different things and I tried to hold you about, so I can only have another building, there's a gray area there, is what you had to describe. And there can only be one building on the property unless there's an accessory, accessory building, I believe you said? And that's what that building has always been, accessory building for when it was the bowling alley, just like a storage building.
Understand, but again, the, that nonconforming, that grandfather clause doesn't go for in perpetuity. And the bowling alley has been gone for eight years. So there isn't anything grandfather on a block period.
Right.
You've, you've lost that opportunity a long time ago.
So are you saying if I build another building that's as big as what, I mean, it's 1,000 or 10,000 square feet, then I have to get rid of that other building?
I'm not saying that that would be the case. It will go through P and Z, we'll have to take a look at it. But again, building materials, everything has a specific use and some of the things that you talked about cross, cross lines, some are allowed in one zoning district, others are allowed in other zoning districts. But, you know, eight years within the last 30 days. I mean, our communication has happened within the last 30 days.
Right.
This has been going on for eight years.
Wasn't, wasn't all that, materials in there until, you know, a year and a half or two.
I, I agree. I'm just not going to say that the city has been the one holding anything up.
Oh, yeah. I'm not saying you guys hold them. I know, but I was getting like gray area on what?
Yeah, you have two zoning districts right next to each other.
Right.
Your bowling alley was in one and your storage units are in another and they have drastically different uses that they allow.
Okay.
It might be a situation where we have to rezone where the bowling alley was at in order to do what you want, which will elongate the process because that takes more public hearings, so on and so forth. It might, might be a scenario where they run all the applications together. As, as we get into, you know, you're, you're aware now that an engineer and an architect have to be involved, they have to stamp all of the materials that come in as part of the trusses and things like that, it all has to be engineered. So anything over 10,000 square feet, it's not city requirement, it's building code requirement. So, so I think we can get there and like I said, as long as these two conditions are met, we're fine.
You on this word here?
Yeah.
Then we all, we all want to get this done.
Yes, I'm sick looking at it. That would be your shop.
So do we need to make a motion?
You would need to make an emotion and basically you're making a, you're making an emotion that you can continue with the nuisance abatement as long as those two conditions with no more than 30 days lapse on behalf of the applicant and within 30 days, materials that are unrelated to, to building are at least, you know, be getting pulled out of the block.
So.
Marcia got that all first.
No problem. And I will second.
One last note before we go. The key is communication and, and that keeps things going. You know, ultimately we can make this a win for everyone.
And then, and is there anything that, I mean, I know I'm over on like the concrete, you know, as far as not having as much of a green space. Is there something you can appeal on that or is it like really set in stone where, you know, I have to tear off?
Depends on what you're talking about.
I mean.
Some of the concrete has to do with stormwater runoff and there is no appeal to that.
Well, there's no, and also no storm sewer down there. I've been paying for.
No, but it's.
Storm sewer for.
Goes to impervious surface and every, every impervious surface contributes to the, the stormwater in one way or the other. So I would argue that some of your stormwater goes back into that creek which we're responsible for the public maintenance of and that's some of that stormwater when it goes to that, that particular issue. But there are going to be some components that yes, the council and planning and zoning commission can waive during the site plan approval and there'll be others that they can't. I can't tell you right at the moment which one would and which wouldn't.
That's the point of the communication and gaining the understanding and, and, you know, you have a responsibility to communicate to them. And I think, I know they're very well aware that they have a responsibility to make sure that they're helping you understand. And I have great faith that they will. As the planning and the project moves forward, they'll give you the guidance on what the options are if there are options. But some things are simply aren't. So I think that's the kind of discussion that moving forward makes the difference.
Good.
And thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm calling this good progress because we've got a agenda item. Doug's been here. We've got a lot, a lot of discussion about it and some, some plans here. So we got a motion on the floor and I think it was Paul and Scott to approve the worded, if you can catch it from the record. Like Chris mentioned. And now we need to vote on that. That's a voice vote. All prepare for that motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and hopefully you see the spirit, which we're looking at it. So make it Doug. Number three, change order number eighteen, police station relation project.
So you will be approving the entire amount of the eight thousand three hundred one dollars because we have the contract with Septagon. And then the design firm will reimburse the city four thousand one hundred fifty dollars and fifty cents.
So.
My second.
Stephanie, move second to move forward, change order number eighteen. And number last, would you say, Doug? That was pretty close.
I think, yeah. We have painters coming tomorrow, hopefully, and finishing up their work. And then hopefully our door system will be there on Friday, finishing up some of their stuff. But I think Septagon's pretty much just punching through their punch list items, which are low, low key, low value. So I don't see anything else coming through.
Moving second to move forward, change order number eighteen, police station. All prepare for that motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move to J E O, downtown street street project.
First invoice is forty eight thousand two hundred seventy five dollars and forty cents. There's really not a lot I can say outside of their summary report, which they really appreciate. They've made good ones so far. Happy with their progress.
Tuesday, tomorrow at?
Two.
Two, two o'clock. The next one, okay. I know it's coming up pretty soon. Thank you. Move to second, Paul and Mark. Okay. Move second to move forward, first, the voice to J E O. All prepare for that motion. Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Davis Park improvements. And we talked about earlier with the lighting.
Yeah, this is the third and final payout in the amount of eight thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and fifty two cents. That it's for the retainage of the project that is not really thirty days of after the meeting. So.
Move to approve the payout. Eight thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and fifty two cents.
Sorry.
And, yeah. Move second to approve the application number three on Davis Park improvements. All prepare for that motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That's a consideration of setting a public hearing date, April fifteenth.
Yeah, the most thing I'm going to tell the council on this before you set the date is this will be kind of a normal, I usually give you a PowerPoint and say, here you go. The PowerPoint is going to look drastically different this year from the perspective of, you know, when I do comparisons of other communities of our size, it's all compared on basically this fiscal year. Next fiscal year, like I said, independence is raising taxes by two dollars. It's just, there's not going to be a fair apples to apple deal. And I don't, I don't want to paint anybody in a bad light. We're all getting hit by this property tax change. So I just want you to know that we're not lapsing on our budget presentation. It's just going to look different with the new change.
Actually, that'll probably be very helpful to spend some time talking through that again, so that we understand what you guys are up against. What we're up against as a community. I still need to move forward on setting a public hearing date.
Approval of the setting the public hearing date for the second meeting in April for the second fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget.
Please Scott, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Stephanie on that one. Scott and Stephanie. Moving forward to sort of public hearing date for April fifteenth. That's consideration of opposed budget. All prepare for that motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Shot to walk, street closure. It's council action. A fourth best weekend.
I'm moving approval for the street closure.
Thank you, gentlemen. Getting it through Friday the third, in the next two days. Moving second to move forward with that street closure. All prepare for that motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I mean, instead of your poor concrete. I knew we made that click.
I guess it's through the motions for approval. Any reports, discussion items? I've got nothing as far as new reports. Anything else for other reports? A reminder of Tuesday, April ninth at.
I see Chris has that on news.
Yeah.
Uh, just to be, we will go ahead and post a notice so you can all be there. There aren't going to be minutes required.
Okay.
I'm asking you, obviously, don't collect at the end of the council, get together at the symposium, please. Just basically putting a notice that all of you could be at this meeting.
Thanks, Paul. If you say aye, we will.
If you decide to do that, just come find Lori and I so we can at least take.
Who approved the agenda at the closing meeting? It's going to be a pretty small business. That takes care of all reports. I think we are to the closed meeting part of the session. So we motion to go into a closed session. Start with Scott there in a second.
Second.
Paul. Moving second to go into a closed session and we'll take a few minutes. All prepare for that motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are out of focus session.